Hi, welcome to our meeting with School Board Director Liza Rankin. Christina Pisagna and I, June Ivers, are your interim a CPTSA area director for D1. I think since Christina does D2, so we kind of split it at the five. So they're on the west side and I represent the east side of the five line. I am area director for D3, and so I just wanted to do a brief land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we live and work on the unceded traditional territories of the Coast Salish people, including Duwamish people, past and present, whose ancestors who've lived here and cared for this land and water since time immemorial. We begin, as we begin, we acknowledge and honor the original people of the various regions. Land acknowledgement is a critical partnership and inclusion in the stewardship and protection of the cultural resources and homelands. This acknowledgement does not take place of an authentic relationship with Indigenous communities, but it is a first step in honoring the land that we are on. And these communities are still here, they're still present, and there are many Indigenous people who are strong and thriving in this community. So we want to honor the past and the present and to those who belong to this land. So I wanted to thank you, and if you could write in your name and what school community you're from, and then also, give me, tell me, what does community mean to you? When you think of the word "community," what does the name, what does community mean to you? And Christina will lead us in some grounding because she is, they are excellent at that.
Hi there, my name is Christina Pisagna, and I am probably seeing a few of you around. Megan, maybe Liza, Manuela, maybe a few of you as well. I wanted to say welcome, and what we've noticed is that we've all been navigating two years of unexpectedness, chaos, and we've learned to make do with what resources we have and support each other where we can. So there's a lot going on. It's, so I wanted to try and remind everyone that we're here, working together, trying to reach out to one another and be present with one another as best we can. So I wanted everybody to maybe just take a minute and take some deep breaths. Maybe if you're seated, if you can make sure that both feet are touching the ground, it actually does make a difference. So if you can place both feet on your ground, sort of let your, your arms sort of relax a little bit, your shoulders a little bit, maybe focus on something ahead of you in front of the room. Just try and notice the busy day you've had today and how you can kind of let some of that go right now. As best you can. That's it. Maybe take some deep breaths. So breathe in, maybe hold it in for two seconds, three seconds, and breathe out. There's something about this time that just makes it really busy for everybody, especially on Monday. So, anyway, welcome, and I will hand it over to Liza to sort of get us started.
Hi, everybody. I was saying to June and Christina before they let people in from the waiting room. I'm so irritated. And so I just kind of wanted to own that in this moment and share with you all that this whole situation is so frustrating and annoying. And I have an elementary school student and a middle school student. One of my kids has IEP support for school refusal. So in terms of understanding challenging and getting your kid to school, like, got it. I'm very frustrated with a lot of things, but we are where we are. So what I want to talk about a little bit is give just a quick background of transportation of the last few years to just help us get some context. And then talk about how did we get to this being where we are? And then I want to hear from you all what specific concerns you have about D1 and what I can elevate and bring back to the district that they might not have heard or considered. And, and then, yeah, what's, what, what, what could happen going forward, I guess? So for people with younger kids who might not have been in SPS for very long, I think it's important to know that historically, three tiers has been the standard of, of bell times, and that is how it is in most other districts as well. That two tiers was sort of a fluke, a good fluke, but a hard fought fluke. But that it was, it's actually only been around for the last four years or so. So in, right around the teacher's strike, 2015 and after, there was, there was a big movement of secondary parents and educators with a ton of supporting data, making a case to the board for shifting secondary start times later. There's a lot of research across the country about the benefit to adolescents of getting more sleep, like between, from like improved grades to reduced car accidents, like, like a whole bunch of data. And it's, it's, it's pretty irrefutable. But the, and so there was a year where that advocacy came pretty hard and heavy around, in 2016, if I'm remembering right. And the fall of 2016 to 2017, there was one year where the same three tiers existed. My older son was in elementary at the time, and the tier three time was actually 9:40. So I had a second grader who had like a whole day with me at home before even went to school, and then at four o'clock would come home just done. But that's how it had been for years and years and years. And so when there was this advocacy for the later times for secondary, again, pretty good data that that's, that's, that's what's good for teens. But as a community member at the time, I didn't appreciate how little elementary students were considered when they made that shift. But it was pretty clear, nobody could argue that it was good for secondary students, but within the constraints of the system, that meant that they moved some elementary schools to tier one, which was really early. And I have all these maps and data because I remember being really concerned about missed instructional time for, for the younger kids who were having a hard time getting to school. And so that same year, and it did, it had an impact. It was a big change for, for the whole system to move secondary to tier two and have elementary split between one and three. That year, there was also a contract renegotiation, and SCA successfully bargained for early release on Wednesday. That was when we first started, so we haven't always had that. That was when the Wednesday early release started. That was a big change for everybody. Part of that meant that in order to meet instructional minutes required by the state, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday had to be extended by 20 minutes. And that was like, okay, you've already pushed elementary students since early time, and now you're going to do it even earlier? Like, we just don't see how this is sustainable. And so there was some pretty heavy advocacy, and I lobbied the, a person with the district, who's not with the district anymore, who is the operational person, said, you know, I said, well, what about, can we just go to two tiers? And she was like, well, we don't have the money to do that. And looking back now, I'm sure it was more complex than that, and she probably just thought, I'll just tell her it's money, we don't have the money to do that. And I thought, well, if we, so are you telling me that if we can get $2.4 million, we can make the shift to two tiers? And she was like, yes. And so with some other people in Seattle Council at the time, we led some advocacy and got the city to grant the school district the money to make that shift to two tiers. And the reason that the money upfront needed to happen is because the whole complicated in a frustrating way that the state pays for transportation for public schools. There's a formula of reimbursement that's based on your previous year's expenses. It doesn't cover transportation costs. And so moving to two tiers was going to be more expensive than three tiers. And so in order to get that reimbursement from the state, having that money upfront granted from the city theoretically meant that the switch to two tiers was going to be reimbursable from the state going forward. It makes sense at the time, but things change. So then we went to two tiers, and that was again unprecedented and unusual and not a standard of other districts or of Seattle. But in terms of health for students, pretty much like a lot of that same data about adolescent health also says that elementary school students shouldn't start school before eight o'clock. But, you know, ideally, everybody would start somewhere around 8:30. But unless society comes up, decides that that's the most important thing and funds it, and we have a whole bunch of people who want to be bus drivers, that's not, that's a, it's not a reality that can happen. And so we had two tiers. So now, past, post-pandemic, post, you know, everything, there is a nationwide labor shortage. Metro can't keep their routes staffed. Over spring break, I drove down the coast to the Redwoods, and every town we drove through, their school had a big sign on the side of the building that said, "Bus drivers needed." So this is not a uniquely Seattle problem. And so, so the proposal has been made by the district to, in order to provide consistent, reliable bus service and get kids on time to school, they have made the assessment that the only way to do that is if drivers drive multiple routes. And so here's the proposal to go back to three tiers. Now, all of that I can understand and get behind. That makes sense to me. I hope that it makes sense to you guys, the way that I've explained it. What doesn't make sense to me, and what I'm furious at, is that that was first, that first came to the board as an issue, a potential switch to three tiers in the fall in a budget meeting. And I asked a lot of questions about, whoa, 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 this isn't, not being much of a cost savings, why is this in the budget? Is this a budget proposal? I don't understand. And it took a month or two, but I finally got clarification from staff that, oh, no, sorry, that's confusing, you're right, it's actually not about the budget. We're having an operational issue where we don't have enough drivers to provide consistent, reliable service. Which I'm like, okay, that makes sense, that's a real problem. Why are we talking about it in a budget meeting? That is a transportation issue that needs to, that impacts every single family, student, educator, and others by changing times. And this is actually not just a shift that has to be made. There is a considerable impact on everybody across the system, and it should not be rolled out without significant engagement. I still don't know, you know, so now I'm shifting into the place where, where I'm, you know, I could list all the ways that I think this went wrong, but that's not really helpful for me or for you. But I just, I wanted to sort of give some of that foundation for the conversation to hopefully add a little bit of context that may or may not have come to anybody from the district. So now, what's happening now is that there is a, well, and also, keep in mind, last two years, there has not, like, we had a whole remote year, and then a mostly remote year. And so transportation wasn't, wasn't a thing that people were thinking about as much. There is an annually adopted transportation service standards. It's adopted by the board that says to the district, here is who is eligible for transportation. That's the document that's being introduced this Wednesday and scheduled to be voted on two weeks after that. Another fun thing about the transportation service standards is that for some reason, the bell times are attached as an appendix to that document, even though the transportation service standards don't say anything about timing or tiers. The service standards are solely about who's eligible for bus service. And based on what that document says about who's eligible, the district then creates the actual busing and routing plans based on, you know, the students that year that meet that criteria. My view is the bell times should not be attached to that at all. I don't know, kind of historically, I think it was added at some point as like an FYI and has slowly crept into people thinking of it as the bell times document, even though it's not a bell times document, that's an appendix, and the document is actually who qualifies for transportation. And so now we're in this position where because there wasn't, it wasn't rolled out in a way that was helpful or informative about the potential changes. We're coming up now to the end of the year, and actually, I will say, you know, I said I wasn't going to talk about whose fault, whatever was, but I will say that when the communication went out from the district that three tiers are happening, the board's going to vote on them. We, the board had not been informed that three tiers was in fact happening. That was also the first time we learned that that actually was moving forward. So, what was I going to say? Oh, yeah, so that, so the, there's, you know, I know that's a lot of information. It all makes sense to me, but this is what I'm steeped in. So I totally understand if some of you are like, well, what is she talking about? But I'm trying to hopefully help kind of explain how we got here, even if you don't like it. And because here is where we have sort of been forced into now. And so what I want to know from you all is what concerns you may have specific to D1 that may not have been considered? One, I know I saw the Broadview Thompson PTA president. One big concern I have is that somebody in staff made a decision to lump the K8s on one bell time. But Broadview Thompson is different in that they are an assignment. They're not, they're one of the, they're, I think, the only K8 that's not an option school. It's a neighborhood assignment school, and that to me is a really meaningful difference in how, you know, what the population is, what the needs are, what options kids have for getting to school. And that is some, is a huge, like, highlight, underline thing that I have for staff. It's like, you need to actually talk to that community because it's a different set of, they're not an option school, they're a K8, but that's not an option school. So, so that, there's a distinction there that needs to be made. So that's kind of one example of how I'm, I'm thinking about this in terms of coming to this conversation and wanting to hear from you. And then I, so I hear from Facebook, my amendment has been quite a discussion. And I'm actually, so my intent, so I put forth an amendment to remove the bell times appendix from this packet because it's confusing and distracting. And my interpretation of the law and the documents and our policy is that the bell times are there strictly as an appendix, and they are, they are currently not up for approval by the board. They are an FYI attached to another document that is up for board approval. So my personal interpretation, and I have worked with legal and all these things, is that I'm not asking for us not to vote on the bell times, that currently the board already does not vote to approve the bell times. And so, the, in, in, again, in my interpretation, the conversation should have been for months about the standards, who qualifies for bus service? And I believe there could have been changes made to that, to change the number of routes, look at, you know, our needs now as a whole district community are different for transportation than they were the last time these standards were adopted. And so it's, it's, that's the, my amendment is an attempt at, we need to talk about the standards before a bell time and cheering system and routing system is developed, and smushing those together is not appropriate. And so that's sort of the barest explanation of that. I can get into more of that if you have questions, but I actually just want to hear from you guys, so.
I'm going to lead off.
Does that sense?
I'll, I'm just, just for video purposes, because some people will be watching this offline at a later date. I will just read out the Broadview Thompson question. When the district was on last, from Broadview Thompson PTA, when the district was last on three tiers, there was not the staffing shortage in the childcare sector. So obviously, the socio-demographic, socioeconomic demographics of Seattle has changed dramatically since 2016. I have a really hard time believing in, believing our CC will be able to cover split shifts. You have us moving from 7:55 to 9:30. Based on the other directors' meeting last Thursday, not our problem, which doesn't seem very community-minded, and shows us how much it is when you start the meeting, trying to acknowledge how much we've been all been through. It just seems like passing the staffing issue on other sectors, childcare, parents, teachers, sorry, I have to leave, blah, 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 but that's the message I like to pass out.
So, and I think, I'm not sure when, if that was typed before or after I mentioned Broadview Thompson, but that was definitely something that did not get considered, was the.
The neighborhood school.
That K is a neighborhood assignment school with different, different demographics, different school focus, different resources. And that is absolutely something that I have been passing along.
And also just for standards, because I know that, you know, like 90% of schools, I hear from my schools, like 90% of the schools don't have any bus riders. So can we clarify for who are eligible for transportation? You know, I mean, people giving, are giving me numbers, right?
You know, 90% of schools don't have.
Like, sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll get these emails or get these things from people that'd be like, well, 90% of our school, our population doesn't even use a bus.
Oh, oh, got it, got it.
So only 10%, so it's like, why do we even need to change it? Because, and I was like, well, we have to talk about who these 10% are.
Yes.
Who are those people that are on the bus? So I would love for you to, to talk to, talk about that with the community.
So I can just briefly, and I, you know, I don't have the specific numbers, but what I understand from the data that does exist, I don't have it in front of me, but that the majority of our yellow bus riders are students of color for this some educational justice. So when we talk about, well, 90% of our school doesn't even use transportation.
Who are those parents?
10% who do use it need it. And, and we can't, you know, we can't say, yeah, majority rules sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. To really think about who that's impacting and what other options there are.
And that we are currently existing on suspended bus services too, right? So it's like, we're kind of already, like, we're only functioning right now. And with October mandate, what ended up happening was that we ended up starting to tear up based upon, can you, do you want to explain a little bit about what the?
I can a little bit. So as far as I know, there are still like 50 routes that are still suspended. And I have asked, like, why can't we just, like, what, like, clearly, it's May, right? It's, so anybody on those 50 routes has found alternatives. And that's my question is, is just permanently suspending those 50 routes a possibility? And that again is, is, it would be driven by the transportation service standards that determine who the district is required to provide transportation for.
Well, I have a hand up from, and then I'll go through the questions, but I'll have Agar. Agar from Wedgewood?
Hi, Agar. Thank you. Hi, Liza. I had some comments. For my situation, you know, I crunched the numbers. It's really an extra half an hour of childcare after school is $2,000 per family. I mean, that is a lot of money that you're, that's being dropped on the families and asked to absorb because most people's jobs are, are the hours that they are. I have a, I have a real problem with that. That's assuming everyone can afford that extra money for childcare or leaving kids alone. So I don't see this as kid-focused for the majority. The, you know, lost sleep, I think, is huge, and I think, like, you know, my child has IEP. It's hard enough to concentrate. Being tired makes it even harder. And, you know, I care about my child's education, and I want my kids to be happy, have a good year, learn all they can, like everyone does. But I do think that you have to consider the majority of children. And making everyone suffer because 10% of the kids don't have transportation, you know, I, I actually don't agree with that because why should everyone's learning be compromised because of the lack of sleep? You know, now, in my family, I have a co-parenting situation, and I think I'm not, there's a lot of children who have that. That means they have to commute when they're not at my house. The other parent does not live nearby. So that's extra time on top of the child thing, and we can't change our custody schedule and go to court each year because the school's doing, changing the times. But a lot of children do have a parent who don't live near the school, and they do have to commute on top of this. And I, it's just no longer doable, you know, when it gets that early. So what I think we should consider, given that every family has to spend extra money on childcare if you don't have a stay-at-home parent, you know, or leave the kids alone, I would like to see individual schools have the option to opt out of using. I have two ideas, that they could either opt out of the buses or that we provide before and after-school care for the bus riders. So if I'm going to spend $2,000 anyhow on childcare, I'd rather give the money to my PTA at Wedgewood and say, provide before and after-school care, like, drop off the bus riders at 7:30. If you have no other options, fine, but keep school start at 7:55. And after school, they can stay until the buses get back. I, you know, I think we can fundraise and let the bell time stay as is. Let the families, if they can afford it, you know, pay to support the community and, and then let everyone else not suffer all year. Because if I'm going to pay the money anyhow, I'd rather get the sleep and keep the bell time as is. And I do think there are, some of the schools could afford to do that within their parent communities. So I would like to have the option for individual schools to let the bus riders come early, but keep the bus times, I'm sorry, the bell times as is now, and I do think that is, could be viable. I think the school district would have to lift the ban on vendors. I don't know why that, if that's coming from the state or what's going on with that, but to let childcare providers, you know, come back into the schools.
Yeah, that was, that's a COVID, that's a COVID thing.
Yeah. You know, but I'm not, you know, since we're not wearing masks and doing other things, I'm not sure why that's even still in place. But by the fall, that could be gone, right? But I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
But, you know, if, if not, can individual schools just say, you know what? We don't need the bus, and we're going to like, give some car pools to the few families who need it. But I know at my school, some of the kids are, who are not, that, some of the people I know who ride the bus, their parents are like doctors. They, they just are busy, it's convenient, but they have other options, you know, and that, there was no survey done.
We also are still required by the state to provide transportation for all children who are eligible.
So if it's written in their IEP, or, you know, if there, or if they, you know, McKenna event to students, they're required by, through a law.
But even if, even if it's not, like, we're required by the state, there's a state-level policy about transportation, and then we have a district-level policy about it, and then there's the service standards. We must provide transportation for all eligible children. And whether or not it's, the determination has to do with like distance from, from school.
Sure. Well, you know, I'm just proposing, I mean, there could be a way that privately, people could say, let's hire drivers and let's solve for these people within our school community and not, and be divorced from the bus system, which is pushing everyone to not a good place. So those are my two ideas, to either just have the schools themselves solve for transportation somehow for the people who really need it, because a lot of the people I've talked to say, I wouldn't, I'm not even going to take the bus that early, you know, like, we'll, we'll drive ourselves, we'll hire someone, like, or let the schools provide before and after-school care. That is a budget issue, like, that could be funded, some before and after-school care for the kids. So let the bus riders, if the bus riders have to come at 7:30, fine. If they have to get picked up at four, fine. But everyone else is going to get their sleep, you know, and then the state has met their requirement, and they're still safe while they're at the school. And, you know, presumably, if they don't have money for a car or driver or whatever, they probably could use the childcare anyhow. So it's kind of a win for everyone. So I mean, I think looking at the childcare issue before and after school, then we don't have to cut off sleep and move up school for everyone. Just let the bus drivers, bus riders get dropped off early, but keep the bell time for everyone else.
Thank you. I'm going to go to our next, I think we're going to absorb that.
Well, one thing I want to add is that some people say, well, my kid gets up at six o'clock anyway. I want the 7:30 time.
Well, then, can they?
I'm just sort of putting that, I'm just sort of putting that out there that, like, this is sort of like a in-person versus remote school thing, that people are going to feel the way they feel about it, and they may be, they're all valid, and they, but they may be diametrically opposed and not as sort of universal as one might want to think. That we, and I've actually gotten emails from high schoolers too, saying, can we just go back to the early time? Because when we had the early time, we could do after-school stuff, I could have a job, dah, 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 dah. But then, you know, people fought really hard for the. But then, you know, people fought really hard for the health benefits for secondary students. So it's, it's. Yeah. I will say, that's the kind of we're part of a system, we're a whole system, and so the system has to make decisions that individually, we may or may not like, but we have to make it with the full community in, in mind, and that having individual schools opt out is not really an option.
Having next question, was the move to two tiers voted on by a previous board?
I'm trying to remember. I, I know, I think they had to approve acceptance of the grant funding from the city. And I can't remember.
Okay, we'll try and circle back on that one.
If they did, it may have been as an amendment, because it's not in state law or district policy that the board approved bell times.
Okay. Someone asked, is there a certain, is there certain people you recommend we email contact by phone to make sure our concerns are communicated? Is there, so I'll add the let's talk in that.
Let's talk is great, because they actually can, the, the people who, who respond to those, it gets routed and tracked, and it's, it makes it, it's, it's way more efficient than email for like, how many people have emailed about this concern? How many people have this concern? And also sometimes, I mean, sometimes it's best to, you know, the board, because we want to hear like what's happening out in our community. But sometimes when like the full board and staff are emailed, it's kind of to nobody in a weird way. Especially if it's a staff question, because then the board reads it, reads it and is like, oh, gosh, that's a really rough issue. If it's somebody in my district or it has to do with my committee, which is curriculum instruction, I might, you know, respond back and say, totally hear that, we're working on such and such. But if it's something that's really a staff question, I will just forward it, or or also be of the hope slash assumption that the appropriate staff is responding. But let's talk, actually make sure that it goes to the person who should get it.
And I think they made one specifically about the bell time, so I'll put that one in the chat.
Yeah, they did.
So that one's specifically in the chat link. With the next question, I.
You see, there's a, I don't, I can't see the whole screen, but I do see a hand up from Mark that's been up for a while.
Yeah, I was trying to go in order, but yeah.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I can't see the whole screen, so I don't know what's going on.
And let's see, Mark, do you want to ask your question? And I'll try and figure out, I'll try and answer these questions on the chat individually.
So I have been using the, the chat link that was there for asking questions, this type of stuff. I don't know if I'm expecting a response or anything for it. But I was just, all the information I've been going from is the information that is shared there on the bell chain schedule. And I was just looking and trying to figure out if they're able to service that many elementary school routes in the first route. With the switch to the three tier, do they assume that the same number of drivers are then able to move on to tier two and then move on to tier three? Or do they have drivers for tier two? I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to figure out a couple of questions that were just to start from that I've already issued through there. The first one was, is who directed this? First off, what the staff came up with is well thought out, well reasoned, the frequently asked questions are great, all this type stuff. But I almost am feeling like maybe they are working on the question that is not what I, I think a lot of parents might feel should have been brought forward is I kind of feel like they were given the task of find all the eligible riders with the driver shortage, how can you solve this problem? And I think their solution was solid.
Yep.
But I wonder if their task had been what is the best solutions we have to stay within the system that we all had a great deal of input and struggled towards the last time that we've not had it, like you had mentioned before, the last couple of years, to even try to see if it continues forward. So that was one of my first things is, I don't fault anybody's work, I think it's been fabulous, but who told them?
I think you have hit it exactly on the head, and that was my question too, is like, I understand that the problem is that there are not enough drivers. And like, no, student-centered, not to, whatever, like, the problem is there are not enough drivers. And like you said, all of the kind of background on like, why this is the conclusion that was come to, solid, totally makes sense. But there wasn't the inclusion of, how is this going to impact your family? Are there considerations you might not have thought? It kind of, it was, it, for me, it feels like solely a logistical problem that didn't take into account broader community impacts.
Do they think this is a permanent problem, because they're making a permanent solution?
I mean, I think any, you know, there's, there's always going to be things that, that change, like, one, one change that just came through on, on Friday that I have already asked about, how does this impact us, is, right now, part of the standards includes which middle schoolers get an ORCA card? And which middle schoolers get transportation from the district? And some of that is because the ORCA cards are expensive. And some of it also, I'm not sure exactly what the matrix is, but I just learned on Friday that there is a, there's a new bill that passed in the legislature just this past session that will fund transportation for all children eighteen and under. If all of our middle schoolers now have access to an ORCA card that the district doesn't have to pay for, does that change our middle school eligibility? And I asked that as soon as I saw that, and I know that they're working on it. So that's the type of thing that like, there's always something else that's always going to happen that change.
I guess what, I, I guess all I was hoping to find out is, one is, I was wondering what direction were they given? And if that was what they were told was all eligible, which is more writers than we're actually currently doing. Secondly, are they? One of the ideas, I, first I put forward questions and I followed up with, with, after I examined all the information they'd shared and sitting in on meetings. My second question was, if you stay with a two-tier and you're trying to make the most use out of the drivers, plus give them, make Seattle more attractive by trying to create a full-time position, what kind of a stagger do you need between a two-bell system in order to utilize every driver on all routes? I just, I, I, I guess I'm, I don't doubt their work that they did, but I wonder if as soon as it was decided that the only solution was three-tier.
I feel like you're in my head, because these are all questions that I've been like, somebody tell me.
Should I expect some response to what I've done? And I'll go ahead, and there's a lot of other people here, so I'll, I'll leave it at that with the thoughts that I've expressed.
Well, and very well expressed. I hope, I hope that everyone is hearing that, because I tend to go off on tangents, but those are all, that is, I share your assessment, but yeah, this makes sense, you did your job. And were any of these things considered? And if they weren't, why not? And then how do we? Yeah.
I saw Marina's hand up, but then I think I saw it go away. We, is it can answer questions?
I, I actually, I do still want to ask the question if that's okay.
Yeah.
I thought that you were next, so. Thank you. Hi.
Hi, Marina.
Thanks for hosting this, Liza. I have a couple of questions. One of them, specific to Hazel Wolf, is, you know, Pinehurst is the program that we have for childcare, and they are at capacity. So we don't have an ability to add more. I don't know if that was already discussed, because I showed up to the meeting late. So that's an impact to our community that we really don't have the capacity to absorb if parents need additional childcare with a later start time. That's one thing. I appreciate the prior speaker who brought up a lot of the things that I was going to bring up around, you know, what is the impact analysis? What is the impact to families? It feels like the decision was centered on the bus, the bus contract and the provider and, and the issue around having enough drivers as compared to.
Actually, the, the contract and the provider are separate.
Right, but, but I mean, the issue with the, we've, we've been dealing with the rider or with the bus driver shortage, which means going to three tiers allows us to have them have more shifts, which gives them a more working wage, et cetera. And, and so all of those things are really wonderful and, and absolutely great, right? We want that. And we're here to educate students and, and our families are being impacted by this decision or will be impacted by this decision. So where was the impact analysis on families and communities taken place? The other thing is, when we went through the loss of buses, because at Hazel Wolf, we were, I think, a tier four or tier three, we lost a good portion of our buses and, and started to see them come back online slowly but surely. We actually did a ridership analysis at the building level and were able to figure out which routes to bring back online sooner. Considering those who are furthest from educational justice and those that needed the routes the most. So we, we have that data. So our ability to be able to evaluate that is there, to be able to say, there's a lot of people that just don't use these buses. And so I have a question, if this is really a legal obligation at a federal or state level that we provide transportation to every eligible rider, is there advocacy that needs to happen on that, where we move away from that?
So the eligibility, though, is determined by SPS. That's the transportation service standards. And that is the huge procedural oversight that I think happened here was that somewhere it was decided that in order to resolve the very real problem of not enough drivers, three tiers was going to need to be implemented. Okay. And then that's as far as it went. What? And, and then I, I think, and I think Mark mentioned this too, is that the focus was on ensuring continued transportation for all eligible riders. And the, the analysis or the, the conversation that I believe should have happened, that didn't happen, was to look at the transportation service standards to see if we needed to make changes to who is eligible. Because the state requires that we provide it to all who are eligible, but the district decides who's eligible. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And that's actually the document that's being introduced on Wednesday that we're being asked to vote on in two weeks, is the trick, is the service standards. And the bell.
Which the bell times were attached on.
There's just an appendix, there's just an FYI to that.
So if we, if we're going to go and do some level of analysis around the impact to communities and families, and we say, you know what, we need to make some adjustments, what is the timeline on all of these decisions and how this maps to, how are we going to have transportation for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year?
Well, this is the thing that I'm so frustrated about, is that timeline was months ago.
Right. I mean, so we're all supposed to absorb that because the work didn't get done. I, I'm, I'm, I'm like literally trying to get my head around this. I can't, and I can't, I can't square this circle.
You know.
Yeah, no, it's extremely frustrating, and I'm working through the same thing too, which was partly the amendment. Like, my amendment was an approach to decoupling those things, because they should be decoupled, because we should have been looking at standards and then creating the tiers. Like, I think that, you know, what, so what should the standards should have been, if it was determined that, oh, hey, actually, all these kids aren't riding the bus, let's figure out if there needs to be adjustments made to the standard, so we don't have to provide transportation for kids that don't ride. That should have happened. And then we also have this driver shortage, we think we need to go to three tiers. How do we meet, you know, the new standards that I'm making up in my head that don't exist, you know, because that, that's what I think should have happened. The standards should have been amended and then saying, okay, we still have this not enough drivers problem. But now we maybe with the change in the standards have fewer routes. So then how do we look at what our options are with that? And I just think that the first part didn't happen. So yeah, as Mark said, they addressed the problem in a reasonable, thoughtful way about previous standing ridership standards, instead of let's rethink the ridership standards, and that has sort of and then sprung on everybody, yeah, we are doing three tiers.
But that's a procedural issue, like, I'm, I'm thinking about like, mothers are going to be absorbing this, right? And, and, you know, in some cases, fathers. And, and we, as much as we have a bus driver shortage, we have a massive childcare shortage. And so that is only going to put that pressure on, we're going to just, you know, pop the bubble and move it over here. It's, it's going into the childcare issue now, which is going to be the before and after school care additions that are going to need to be in place that we don't have the ability to do in a lot of buildings. They don't have capacity for it. They don't have, and, and so unless there's magically, the district's going to come in and start providing childcare and full wraparound services, we've just created yet another problem that's going to impact people's ability to work and, and have childcare for their kids. And I know this was not on you, and I'm just your, our district representative, and I'm trying to understand, like, where do we go from here? How do we advocate to get the right data to make the right informed decision versus the one that we have to inherit because somebody didn't do their job?
I, yeah, I, I wish I knew the answer to that. I don't. One attempt at solving that is the amendment that I'm bringing forward to decouple these things so that it will, my thinking is that it will force the standards to be adopted as the standards. Instead of a proxy for whether or not we like the bell times, right? That's really what this is setting up, is the standards are actually really important, who's eligible for bus service. Overshadowed by this appendix and led everybody to sort of the inaccurate belief that the board can vote yes or no on the bell times, and then they will somehow magically change because we don't like them. And that is a big, big problem, a big problem, because you know, one option is that the board just votes no on the whole thing. Well, then there's no transportation standards, which means nobody is eligible to ride the bus, and then that gets into a legal and logistical problem, right? So like, that's not really an option. The, I, I'm still debating, debating over my own amendment, whether it solves a problem in the way that I want it to be solved, because really, the way that I want the problem to be solved would involve rewinding time, which is not obviously going to happen. But, no, that's kind of where we're stuck. And this, if you've been around SPS for a while, this is standard operating procedure. It's the last minute, huge emergency, everybody flips out. And the, I mean, how many times have you seen the board talk about how much they are frustrated and mad at something and then vote yes on it anyway? Probably a lot.
Yeah, but we're supposed to be trying to do things better now.
I know. I know. Yeah. And this was a big but, but also like, we are where we are now, so that's what, I mean, yeah, I wish I had an answer. I'm trying to address it with an amendment, and I don't know if it does it, I'm still thinking like, maybe I won't even bother. But then, yeah, if the whole thing's voted no, the bell times still aren't part of that, they're just an appendix, so that still could mean nothing changes. Yeah, it's very frustrating.
We are at our last ten minutes, and so I just, Rebecca has her hand raised. Rebecca?
Hi.
Hi, Liza, how are you?
Oh, I've been better. How are you?
So much fun. So I have a couple of points that I'd like to bring up, because I have some concerns about things that maybe haven't been considered. We do have a bus driver shortage. We also have a childcare shortage, as Marina has talked about, and we have a teacher and other important building staff shortage, such as librarians, nurses, ESAs. So I have a high school junior at Ingram who did not have an ELA teacher for the first five or six weeks of this year, they just had substitutes, because the person that they were hiring wasn't being released by their previous school. Now, because they hadn't got their other person in place. Now, I know busing is important, but as the parent of a high school junior, I think it's more important that we're making sure that we are staffing our schools with educators and support staff. And I want to understand what SPS has done to determine how moving to three tiers is going to impact the recruitment and retention of our educators and our other support staff. Because if, for example, you have a teacher who's now going to have a seven thirty start, and they have a kid in daycare, daycare wouldn't open that early. So I am really, I mean, and that's setting aside the cost issue to individual families, which is an invisible cost to SPS of paying for private childcare, daycare, after-school care of any sort. I, I just want to understand, like, what is the trade-off here? Because do we care more about retaining bus drivers, or do we care more about retaining, you know? Because do we care more about retaining bus drivers? Or do we care more about retaining, you know. Teachers in our high schools and our elementary schools and ESAs in our middle schools. That I feel is the trade off that is totally opaque right now. And I don't even know if you guys have answers to that. And then just as kind of an add on to that. Um, I was talking to the principal at Hazel Wolf, I have a kid at Hazel Wolf too still on Friday and, you know, she and I go back to 2010. That's when I first started being a parent there. And we were talking, so we've been like every start time from 7:50 to 9:30. 30 or something, I don't know, it's been all over the place. But one of the questions that she and I were talking about was. If you keep drivers on two tiers and you're trying to give them more hours, like. Every school is hurting for lunch supervision stuff. Every school is hurting for recess supervision stuff. Stuff. So like, where are the creative approaches to doing that? In such a way that isn't putting at risk retention and recruitment of our core staff in our buildings.
Yeah, we definitely had that, that conversation. That question has actually come up a lot of times. Um, why can't we fill in like recess monitors, lunch monitors, like you say? Um, pressing guards obviously wouldn't work because that's all happening at the same time as, as driving buses. Um, the short answer is that involves totally different labor unions. And so examining. If it's possible to do hiring in that way, would it involve contracting in a way that has not been done before? I know that that's not necessarily that it means it couldn't, but that's, that's the. Uh, the identified challenge is like, oh my gosh, that's a whole other thing that is, is it even possible? And it would involve legal stuff and labor stuff and. Um, not to say that it, it can't happen, but that's, yeah, that's been the. Response to that question so far.
I get that. My bigger question and my bigger concern is about the recruitment and retention of teachers and other support staff in buildings.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, on that, like, yes, and I know that these adjustments impact everybody. And, um, that when, uh, we had three tiers before for, for all but one year. It was kids who could by and large get themselves to school that had that earliest time. So you didn't have the childcare factor as much. But, you know, in terms of, not that it, not that it doesn't or shouldn't have consideration for, for staffing, because obviously it does. But also that two, again, two tiers is really unusual in that, um. Between 7:30 and 9:30 is pretty typical. And so I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I know that everybody's individual circumstance is going to vary. But in terms of like a broader impact on. If teachers are able to teach here, if they want to keep teaching, the alternative would go to another, would be to go to another district that. Also has three tiers. You know what I mean? So I'm not sure if that's, because also like, one of our, you know. Obligations is to help kids who are eligible get to school. And so that, you know, that's, it's, it's all, it's not, I don't think it should be a trade off because actually this, the, the three tiers isn't about, ooh, how can we? How can we attract drivers and keep them? It's like, we just literally like, two tiers is not, there's not drivers. There's not drivers to serve all the routes. If I really answered the question, but.
So we're at our last four minutes and I don't know if you have the capacity to stay on for like 15 minutes longer to address some of the questions in the chat. But, um, I, I, the one that I wanted to highlight out is, um. Uh, regarding the May 18th vote, how would the amendment affect the vote and what's being voted on May 18th?
Oh, that's a great question. So, um. Yes, uh, you haven't tuned into all the board meetings, which are so exciting. And I'm sure everyone attends all of them. Um, when a bar comes through, bar stands for Board Action Report. And that'll be like a cover letter document that's attached to, um, a policy adoption or whatever, an expense, whatever the thing is that's coming before the board. And so typically the, um, the bar will come to a committee. In this case, uh, it's the Transportation Service Standards Annual Approval, which went to the Operations Committee. The committee will discuss it, um, and then decide. Uh, then they have to vote it out of committee. So they can move it forward by voting, you know. We move this out of committee with a recommendation that the rest of the board consider it. Or a recommendation that the rest of the board approve it. And, um, that doesn't influence the votes, but it just means like what the committees sort of, you know, the committee even think, either thinks like, yep, it looks good. We think, we think, um, the board should approve it. That is, or for consideration would be, well, we're moving it forward, but. We have more questions and we, we expect the rest of the board to have more questions. Um, and so then it will come for introduction. So this week on Wednesday, at a regular board meeting, that item will be. For introduction, which there's no vote taken, there's no action taken, but the item is brought forward. And, um, sometimes, you know, questions that board directors asked in committee, maybe staff has had time to find an answer. Or things that have come up between committee and introduction. Um, there'll be a time for. Uh, questions, um, about the item and then, uh. Then it comes back again at the following meeting for action and that's where a vote is taken. And generally if there, if it's not controversial, if there haven't been changes and introduction, it was. People were like, well, yeah, this is either a standard item or everybody thinks this is great, whatever. Um, it'll go to what's called the consent agenda, just as a time saving thing where a batch of things can get voted on together. Instead of going through again each item. Um, uh, and any of the board directors at any time can say, actually, I did have one more question about that. I want to pull it off the consent agenda and talk about it as an action item. And then we will, that will happen. Um, or, you know, sometimes, uh, it's, we know that there needs to be more discussion and so we'll just go right on the action part of the agenda. Um, and then if there are more questions or concerns that need to be gone over. Uh, then there will be a call for a vote by the board. Um, and so. And then it will be approved or not approved. And so on the 18th, I don't even know what date it is today. On the 18th, um, the item that will be voted on is the Transportation Service Standards. A document that determines who is eligible for transportation for the following year. And as part of that document is an appendix that includes. Um, bell times. But that's not what's actually being voted on is the standards. And they've gotten sort of inflated and smooshed together in a way that is really confusing. And inappropriate. Um, and so the currently the board already doesn't. The vote is not on the bell times, it's on the standards.
So I just to conclude with tonight, I just wanted to, um, are you going to be at the, are you doing advocacy tomorrow with Sam Fogg tomorrow? Okay, so for your advocacy PTA reps, um, Liza Rankin will be with Sam Fogg tomorrow.
Yeah, I meet with legislative chairs once a month.
So if anyone wants to go to that, there's also that. But, um, someone asked me. How the, you know, so how will the board plan to resolve this? Like, what are our actions? Is this a done deal? Is, I mean, because I know it's been, it's been promoted as drafted tier times, but, um. Is this it? Like what, can you give us some insight into the crystal ball?
Um, I mean, I hope that it's not. I know that, uh. So this is, and I'm still thinking of this and actually, um, if, I'm going to say a little bit more about my amendment and I would love to know. As you're listening, what your opinion is, because I'm actually struggling with this, with my own amendment. About if it serves the purpose that I want it to serve is, so, um. Uh, I mean, on, you know, one hand, we could say. Yeah, it's already not a board decision. It's not governance. It's completely operational and we can't do anything about it. I don't, I am not really willing to accept that. I don't think the board should be in a position of saying, well, I think the times should be these. Um, because we're not, we're not equipped to. But that's, that's, you know, voting on, board members shouldn't be voting on whether or not they like something. Um, because there's, there's legal requirements, there's other things, but, um, we, we should be voting to approve things that we feel represent. With the community values and, um, provide service to the families that, in a way that meets the vision of the district. And I do not believe this has met that mark for various reasons. Um, but the problem, here's the kind of rock and a hard place is. The, the bell times is really a customer service issue. And as the provider of the service. SPS needed to engage with community about changes to service in a way that they did not do. I don't want to guess why they, I think it's as simple as Mark said, there's a ton going on. The people who were tasked with addressing the driver shortage problem addressed it in this proposal. It should have then gone further out and, and didn't. And I'm still, I'm still. Pissed quite honestly that it didn't because I know I asked about it in budget meetings in November. Um, but. But that's really for the board to say, the rock and the hard place is there has to be. Um, approved standards every year in order to operationalize. Busing. So if there's no approved standards, there's nobody who qualifies for busing. So that's kind of the. Place that we're forced into is. These things didn't happen in the way we all would have liked them to have happened. Um, and. The board voting no on the standards actually doesn't do anything to change the time. And so what my. View is what I'm hoping to do with my amendment that I'm still wondering, is it going to do that or not? Is to say, hey, district, you are bringing us this thing that we can't vote on as it is. We can't. It shouldn't have the bell times in it. These are two separate issues. And this work on, on the bell times didn't happen and you cannot expect that we're going to rubber stamp it. Because you need an approved standard. And so my hope is that. Um, by decoupling those things, it sort of says like. Shove this in here because we have to have adopted standards. And then, um. Uh, to say to the superintendent, what's your hand? And he knows I'm going to say this. What's your plan with the bell times? Because it is not. The board is not of the belief that this is the best we can do. Or you can do rather as a district. And, um. I'm nervous about that, to be quite honest, because. I, because there hasn't been this sharing of information about the work that's been happening behind the scenes. I don't know what the options are. I don't know if it's, I don't know if these three times, I don't believe this is the best we can do, but what if it is? Um, and, uh. So, yeah, I'm, you know, if I do continue with the amendment, it's really taking kind of a leap of faith that like. The district needs to make this as right as they can in a short amount of time because the work was not done earlier on.
And I, and I really, you know, because I remember this was brought up at state legislative session and it died, right? Like the, I mean, the funding, but it's like regardless, even if we brought up, it died, it couldn't even get introduced in committee, right? So it's like.
But even if there was, the problem here isn't.
Even if the money, we don't have.
Labor. Yeah, it's labor.
So, but, but for me, it was just like, I remember from that point in January, we were talking about three tier. So like this, you know, and now it's only three months later. So it's like, we were still having that conversation. But yet what we're doing at that point in time and like, could we have, could people, if they knew like a transparency about these three tiers? Could they opted out of their school choice, you know, knowing that like, you know, whatever, I mean, and go back into their neighborhood school or whatever? Because it is a choice, right? So, uh, are we all in a rock and a hard place? And so sometimes.
Well, and that was one option that was brought up at some point. Again, that would be in the service standards. Do, um, I mean, one, we've gotten emails from people who have said, what if we, what if the district doesn't provide. Transportation for option schools? Would that help reduce the number of buses? I mean, the answer is yes, it would reduce the number of buses. I don't know if that's something that's, you know. There's a lot of things that would, could reduce the number of buses, but that's also people who don't attend an option school suggesting that somebody else.
Take away, yeah, that's, that's a resource hoarding game, yeah. Um, I really wanted to thank you so much for your time and for volunteering to be a part of community and hear from your community. I have those questions, um, that we're capturing and I record this, but, um. Uh, yeah, I wanted to thank you guys all for coming to here and really presenting some ideas and really. Talking out loud with, with each other instead of Facebook about what's going on here. So, um, thank you so much, everybody. And hopefully we'll keep an eye on May 18th and see what happens.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm, we better see some stuff happen between now and May 18th.
Yeah.
Keep an eye before that.
Well, thank you, everybody. And, um, thank you, Liza. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Manuela. Thank you, Seattle Council PTSA. I just wanted to plug on May 5th, we're having the superintendent listening session tours. I put the link in the chat. And it is for student voices only. And then next Monday is for families that are receiving special education services. And so these are opportunities that you can talk to the superintendent and tell the superintendent directly like your thoughts. And he engages with community by, um, hearing your feedback and what is a welcoming environment in your schools. Um, thank you so much for everything and I hope you.
Oh wait, sorry, can I ask, I want to ask one more quick question.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, uh. Like two tiers, as far as I understand, is, um. Not possible, even if we do, we do reduce some drivers. But my question is, or what I want, what I am. Asking of the superintendent is what can be done to narrow the time between the first tier and the second tier? Because like I said, I'm not convinced that, I think, I think an hour and then an hour is what they said, like. Yeah, we can do that with drivers driving multiple routes. And again, like Mark said, that will solve the logistical problem. Done. I want to see those times get closer together. And so my question for you all. And if you could do a quick, I don't know, before you go, either yes or no in the chat or email me or a thumbs up before, um, June closes the meeting. Is, you know, what, and this is, again, this is just coming from me. I don't know what the feasibility of this is. But it's something that I'm pushing to have examined is would even taking like 10 or 15 minutes off of either end be meaningful to you?
I think that was like the previous three tiers, right?
Um. I can't remember what those.
I think they said it was like a.
Those were 50 minutes, 50 minutes. I think it was 50 minutes.
Um, back in about 2010, my kid was in the earliest tier start and that was, I believe, 7:50 AM. And that was in the days when there were shared bus routes between schools and staggered start times, which actually worked pretty well. And our principal said that. That actually worked pretty well and that.
We had that as, that was as recently as 2010.
Yeah, it was, it was 2010 to about 2013.
I am generously assuming that there is something I don't understand about busing that makes this not possible. But I don't understand why it's not possible to have like, hey, and co that are a mile from each other. Be the same bus and be like a half an hour apart.
Decatur and Thornton Creek.
For example. So. So I don't know, just, yeah, uh, would shortening. Shortening that time. Um, even by a little bit be. And again, the biggest difference between three tiers before and three tiers now is that it was secondary students who had the first year who can get themselves to school. And, uh, I think it's, you know, it's pretty well established that that. I, I, I think it's still the consensus that we don't want to lose the benefit to adolescents of that later time.
But I remember, I remember one meeting that we went to, someone was like, well, why don't we just, like, I did volleyball at 6:00 AM or whatever, like, you know, in high school, like. If you have, because it's like, I know that there is like the whole thing with our negotiation with our parks district on like, you know, the four, you know, the.
Yeah, we have to be, SPS has to be, we have shared use agreements with fields and there's all these other things, but, you know, one argument too is like, that's after school stuff. We need to do this, but the reality is all those things have an impact on each other and all of those things affect how kids feel about school too.
And their community.
When they can participate in those things, it's important.
Yeah, whether or not it's orchestra, whether or not it's, you know, it's baseball. So, um, yeah. So should we do a little thumbs?
I guess just little thumbs up, thumbs down, like.
I know. Well, I guess thumbs, can everyone?
I mean, I mean, uh, like.
Let's do thumbs up. I see Kalen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five. I see seven thumbs up out of 23. I see seven thumbs up, out of twenty-three. So shorter times.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure if I said, would you guys rather have three tiers, everybody would say two, but that's, that's.
That's not possible.
I have two tiers too.
Yeah. So it's like, it's, yeah, Mark, Mark, is that a question, or are you just, are you thumbs upping with it, or a hand raise?
I just didn't know how to get a hold of Liz. And so I was going to make a suggestion for her amendment.
Oh, let me hear it.
I think that you're correct in that it is an addendum. It's added on to your thing, and if what you're voting on is the policy, is your amendment simply to strike the addendum from it because it does not affect your vote on policy?
Yes.
If it's not part of the data set that you need to take to determine who rides the bus, I, I didn't see, I watched that long, long meeting, all of it. And I can't seem to find it anymore or find it at all. But it didn't seem as though there was resistance to not having that be part of what you vote on. But that doesn't make it go away.
Oh, you're, you're stuck, Mark, you're skipping. Yeah, let me, there we go. I think a concern is that if it's, if the times are decoupled, that it just, you know, relinquishes all of our authority unless the district do whatever they want with bell times. But the reality is, that's how it already is. That's actually not what the vote is on, it's on the standards. And the bell times have, in my opinion, inappropriately been tacked to the back of that as an FYI. And staff needs to put that somewhere, but in a more appropriate place where it doesn't create the issues that it's creating now, where they expect the board to approve something that isn't actually part of the service document.
I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just worried that if you decouple it, what kind of say do us as parents or even the board, as you were wrestling with before, have any influence then? Because I agree, it's probably not anything to do with the standard, it's just information for your determination on where to draw the lines for a standard.
Except for that that's backwards, because.
Really, the times.
I don't have any ideas for an action.
What's that? Oh, yeah. No, it's, it, it kind of sets, it kind of sets up. It's really misleading, because, I mean, I know everybody's thinking, everybody's like, oh, yeah, I don't wanna change this, vote no on the standards. And I'm like, the time, the times are not the standards. But I have that scene, and I started overthinking and second-guessing myself today. It's like, does this just mean that there, that it gets buried and there's nothing? But what I need to remember, or we all have to remember, is there are other management expectations that the district has. So whether or not it's board-approved, it's still total, it would be totally inappropriate for a huge change to happen without. And I think actually, because it has board approval, it kind of gave cover of, well, we'll just let the board decide if this is okay or not, instead of doing actual engagements. That, yeah. That, you know, I still expect the district to do the work. And I know there's some kind of a community engagement tool that the district has developed, and my feeling is also that on that, that if that tool didn't signal the need for deeper engagement on this item, there's something wrong with that tool.
Lisa, I just wanted to suggest, I hope you do vote against the document, because I think that might force a reassessment of who's eligible. That may be the only option at this point, from what I'm hearing.
Well, I'm actually planning to make some other asks to the eligibility document and stuff.
But I'm hoping that that is reconsidered, and I had put in the chat that, you know, the district emails us often about, here's a superintendent chat, and here's COVID information. They have the ability to reach out to everyone very efficiently. And if, if, yes, a survey, they should have analyzed this in the fall, but if you need to analyze it in the next two weeks, I also think you could still reach people and find out who really, really needs the bus and make it clear what's at stake. And try to get some actual data. But I, since you can, I, I get, you know, you obviously have the ability to reach out to people, so let's get the data, even if it's later than ideal, and find out how many numbers are we actually talking about? Once the parents are clear on what's at stake and why they need this and what it means.
I think they can talk to principals too. Principals know, you know, I've had a few principals that are like, oh, I know, we have two routes that could easily be one. You know, principals know how many kids are on the bus. So even, even that would be.
But, and then reassess those standards. I, I really hope that you, that that's forced to be done. And even if it's a scramble and work has to, it's later than should be. But I think it needs to be reassessed and do something to stop this. There's just too many negative impacts on people, and I am also afraid that you're going to lose more people to private school. Because, and, and that's not good, you already, the district lost a lot of people to private school during the pandemic. And to lose more people because they're discontent about this, or childcare just won't work, or work schedules just won't work, or they don't think their kids are gonna be able to concentrate tired, that's not a good spiral for the public schools. And I, I believe in public education, I went to public schools, but you don't wanna, you wanna keep that socioeconomic diversity in the public.
We also have, I mean, that, well, I'm gonna, I don't wanna get too much into this, but, but enrollment was declining, like, we have a housing crisis in Seattle.
I get it, there's a lot of reasons.
Move here.
I know, a lot of people I know switched to private school because the public schools weren't in-person. So I'm just saying that, and then to do other things, like, there are still options, and you don't want to lose more families who have the ability to pay for private school, because then you lose that socioeconomic diversity in the public school. And that's not a good cycle to get into, because then more people are not gonna wanna join public school, because it's gonna be, the population's not gonna be as appealing. And I, I just, I really think that's not a good cycle, if people are like worried that they're not gonna.
I, I don't think it's okay to say that poor families are not appealing to.
Well, I just mean in terms of attracting people.
I need to, this is twenty minutes over already, so.
Thank you so much for everybody, for, you know, there is that let's talk building, let's talk button. And if anyone has any questions, you guys can email me, my email is june-no.ivers@scptsa. Christina and I, I represent the East Schools for D1, and Christina represents the West Schools. But you guys can just email me, and if you have any other questions, just, we'll be around. Thank you, everybody.
This is gonna be probably all anyone's gonna be talking about for the next two and a half weeks, so.
I know, I'm already over it.
Keep asking questions as they come up, and, and hopefully there'll be more outreach from the district in terms of the, the service, from the service end.
Yeah. Well, I'm here for radical reimagining of our sustainable, what is sustainable in our school. Society, so have a wonderful evening, get some rest, take a deep breath, and we'll get through this together. Thank you, community, thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you, June.
Thanks, everybody.